Order on education.
Holy God, in heaven, thank you for the night, God, and we just thank you for these people. They're our leaders and we pray that you give them wisdom and we pray that you bless them, bless this time as we discuss the city's business. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
May I approve the agenda?
Motion by Commissioner Lambert and second by Commissioner Bellton to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, be respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any public comments? Moving on to our action agenda, the minutes of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
I need to approve the minute of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second, there's been a motion by Commissioner Bellton and a second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the minutes of the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number twenty.
I have a question. I noticed that we pay current land for maintenance, a light, replacing light bulbs or I thought we rented those, so.
You can finish one of those later.
It's zero six eight three. It was only for five hundred and seventy-five dollars, but it just seemed to me that was maintenance.
We do pay them for.
I'm trying to see what, but I guess, yeah.
They've replaced a couple lights in the city park, I know. Something like that.
The lights, just the light bulb or whatever.
It's usually the fixture by now.
Okay. I was curious because I thought we rented those while we were paying for maintenance.
We put two newer ones in city park that were skate park and skate park in the parking lot there by the, by the house because they're brighter. So we're trying to help the security. That was over the summer though.
What was that number again, Marshall, that we can follow?
Well, I thought it was zero six eight three.
Yeah, it is.
Table three seven eight oh seven.
On page nine of the report.
And what was the amount?
Five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. It's not that much, but.
We'll, we'll go back and verify for that and let you guys know. Questions? Looking for a motion?
I move to appropriate appropriation ordinance number twenty.
Just been a motion by Commissioner Wentz and a second by Commissioner Bellton to approve appropriation ordinance number twenty. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Close out for CDVG demolition grant.
Hello. How are you guys? Good. So we have completed the remaining houses for the CDVG grant. And we have made it through our initial and final monitoring with no findings, so that's good. And we are ready to close this project out.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a closeout paperwork for the CDVG demolition grant.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert and a second by Commissioner Wentz to authorize the mayor to sign the closeout paperwork for the CDVG demolition grant. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Do you feel like us to sign it now so you can get going?
She can scan it and then to me the choice of electronic filing now.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. License agreement with Cloud County Community College for private utility and public right-of-way.
Mayor, there's the college intends to connect their main campus with their Tech West campus across the street on College Drive and to do that, they intend to put more underneath College Drive, put a kind of a conduit in there to put a fiber optic cable through. Definitely needed over there and definitely helpful for them and the work that they do. In order to do that, it is private utility. That fiber optic cable will be the responsibility to the college to maintain. This license agreement would authorize them to put that private utility in a public right-of-way. We will continue to maintain College Drive. The college understands that if in the event that we need to do something different in that right-of-way area, that they would be responsible for any maintenance or replacement of the fiber optic line. And we're okay with doing this. Fuller did take a look at it from a right-of-way permit standpoint and felt that it wouldn't be detrimental to the road, especially since they're doing some boring underneath of it. So we're okay with helping them out with this. This just puts that document in place too that alerts anybody in the future that this is there. We did write it such that it was permanent and runs with the land, so that way in case there's any transfer bonus of which we wouldn't anticipate happening, but if there is, then this could stay there in place and wouldn't have to be removed. We did try to work with timing with the college because they were trying to move through this quickly, so their board did consider it last Tuesday. The intention was to consider it and have the motion be contingent upon your authority because as the owner of the right-of-way College Drive, you are the grantor and so it doesn't take effect until you give the authorization. So it's coming to you this evening. Have any questions or concerns? Happy to answer them. This is kind of what we're asking for is their permission so they can proceed with their connectivity for their campus.
I move to approve the license agreement to allow Cloud County Community College to install private fiber optic line in the public right-of-way of College Drive.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Hatch and a second by Commissioner Bellton. Is there any further discussion?
Actually, I'll point out in the packet, we did not have page two, but we have page two in for your signature. So if you guys all want to take a look at it, you're welcome to. If you want to do that now or if you want to do that afterwards, welcome to. Page two is primarily a signature page for our side.
No other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Police department body camera replacement.
Last May, the contract went out with Exxon. The body camera company, Axon. The body cameras contract ended last May, I believe is when it was. Before that, they were supposed to do an update and never got done. So we're in a process right now of having body cameras on officers that batteries are dying out and we're having to go through and switch out body cameras throughout the night just so that they have body cameras with them. The reason we looked at this company is right now they are, we have their system in the vehicle, so when the officers turn on their lights, it automatically activates the camera. So by leaving up at the same company, we wouldn't have to buy that piece. We also have our data stored with this company already. So we'd be using that same system and this company is the only one that has, if the taser is activated, it automatically turns on the body camera. It is kind of a costly deal. The total of the contract is fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents for five years. And so it's ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents a year.
Does that cover, is there so many, are there so many licenses or so many cameras that that covers?
It does and I can't remember exactly the. Every officer would have a body camera with that.
And previously had they charged yearly for what we had previously?
That was my understanding. I wasn't involved with it before, but that's my understanding and the contract ran out in May.
It looks like this includes twelve cameras.
Twelve cameras, but one for, I believe that's exactly, but I don't believe the chief had one is what I think it is.
He did.
He did.
What's the life expectancy?
The life expectancy, they say is about five years midway they'll do an update. And that wasn't done on these last ones. It got lost somewhere in there. So this will be on the calendar and ensure that's done and then keep it up that way.
And the update is for the batteries?
The batteries and any software updates.
So then there would be no additional charge at that time?
That's, that's the understanding and the way the contracts are.
So you knew this was coming. I'm sorry. Okay, so I've done a little bit of research myself and I'm not trying to tell me. But it appears that quite a few of the surrounding police departments, sheriff's departments, interesting enough, highway patrol doesn't have body cameras they just do. So surrounding PDs and SOs use WatchGuard. Refurbished cameras and lead time is about a month on those. They cost four hundred dollars a piece. Eight hundred, brand new. They couldn't get me a lead time for that. And some that have started with WatchGuard are ten years old and they still work fine. They don't have the auto on for the taser display, but me as a fellow wife, that camera should always be on with any interaction and I believe it's the police department policy, any interaction, cameras on, so I'm not a hundred percent sure that the auto on is a huge deal. The, on the cloud is a little bit concerning just because of security reasons. I don't know how secure that is. Surrounding SOs, PDs back them up to hard drives instead of clouds. That way there's no monthly fee for the cloud. No possible security breach and they're always within reach and maybe the cloud, they're always within reach anyways. The only, with who I got feedback from, the only thing that they said was the WatchGuard cameras are big and they are bulky, but my husband uses one and he's had it for ten years now with no issues. So I don't know. I feel like we need to bid this out. I understand that we need to get the cameras on the guys, obviously for several obvious reasons. But I just feel like ten thousand, almost eleven thousand dollars a year for cameras that, that obviously somebody researched may be okay. I think we need to bid it out. I don't, what's the lead time for these? Do we know?
My understanding is it would be about the first of the year.
Okay, so about the same.
The biggest thing I know that they've said is that with this company, whenever it's done before, they accessing the cloud and stuff. I know there's the security issues and it's protected, but Devon says that's worked out nice. That saves place on their server and the backups. And then it's always there. That was one of the things that he did like about this when they originally went to this with the other style of cameras. That's one of the big things that he said.
Was the cloud.
Because I have to work with these guys every single day and because I, I do that at another place too. The, the cloud is actually more secure than a server, to be perfectly honest. In those contracts for the cloud security, most of the time, and I am guessing they probably have one too, is that in the event that something would happen with the cloud, there's actually a person on staff or a person who then assists. And if something takes place, helps us to mitigate those damages or those issues, we don't necessarily have that if we just have it on the server. You're not always guaranteed that they're going to back it up to the server. Also that server has unlimited warranty. So I've had times where I've had to go back and try to get something and it's not there anymore because it's too old. And you know, we're not always filing cases immediately. Sometimes you're like, yeah, we gotta go back and get this and it's not there anymore. The auto on is actually very important because in a situation, I've had times where my officers have had to pull a taser and maybe, maybe their cameras turned off. I've had times where I've had to ask our guys, do I have a video? Like, no, the camera wasn't working. That's unacceptable. And it's not their fault. More and more now on our traffic stops here and everywhere else, especially up eighty-one, is we are getting a lot of people saying that the officers are having misconduct at the stops. And then what I'm able to do is access that video and I can then prove that in fact that didn't take place. Sometimes the software to implement, if we get a whole new thing, is going to cost quite a bit of money. I don't know what watchdog would be to implement, but that's a whole other set of software. So you know, there is, in my opinion, it's very important that we get. This has been something for a while that my guys have been trying to get, okay, that our guys have been trying to get and they need these very badly. It's a safety and a liability issue in my opinion. So you know, when we, when I say, I know it's expensive, but you know, I have a feeling if we have to implement the software for WatchGuard, just knowing anytime I've ever had to have anything implemented software-wise, it's been horribly expensive to implement that and then there's a learning curve. You know, I, that's just my two cents having worked with, with these guys. And when we're sitting in court and I have somebody berating them and saying, well, you know, this happened at the stop. If I'm able to very quickly go, no, that didn't happen at the stop, then I can, I can stop some of that or they can stop some of that. Chief Boss and I've had situations where he was over there with a video and the person who's saying that it was inappropriate, they yelled at me they did this and in fact it didn't happen. Now, I know that the WatchGuard that you're talking about would be as well, but refurbished cameras terrify me. I never buy anything refurbished because that, in my opinion, means it's probably not going to work. But I mean, obviously, you know, that's just my two cents having, having worked with these guys and just the, the need that we, we really do need.
Oh, I, I absolutely agree. And you're probably right with the software integrated between the WatchGuard and what they already have.
And with that software, we'd have to get a different control for every vehicle so that when the lights were activated, it would activate the camera.
So thank you for doing that additional research. I really appreciate that. I, my question would be for you guys, you said that there, it was, it's hard to see on the camera, right? The cameras that we have right now and the batteries, you know, went out while we're working with the same company, right? So why is it now suddenly better?
The, the cameras they have now are small devices that were made to go on the hat or glasses on the shoulder and what happens a lot is they end up falling off. These would be ones just like the WatchGuard that are mounted on the center of the chest, so it's going to give them a different view. And then the batteries have just been updated in the design. It's a whole different design of cameras. It's a different style of battery.
So do they come on when they turn the?
Lights.
Lights on, so they're on all time.
Anytime that the lights are activated. Now if they get out of the vehicle, then they have to manually activate if they haven't turned on the lights.
Say that again?
So if they don't turn on the lights, if they're just walking, doing door checks downtown and they have an interaction with somebody, they'd have to manually still turn it on.
Okay.
But if they stop somebody on the highway with their lights on.
Right.
On when they get out of vehicles.
It might, I think, I think it'd be prudent to put the numbers together as what this other program might be and to have us. I mean, I think there's not, there's not an argument as to the benefit of having these. I think we all understand the importance of time as well. But having those numbers to put side by side, this is what implementing this WatchGuard program would be. This is what this would mean. This is what their longevity looks like. This is what staying with Axon says. Two weeks is two weeks. But if we have those numbers together, then, then it just would, I think, help make the most informed decision we can to support staying with this company or actually all things considered, putting it on the table, it looks like it would make sense to make the transition.
Because those cameras aren't very old, are they?
The ones?
The ones, they're five years?
Five to six years.
Yeah.
But I can also appreciate the, thinking what my camera was like five or six years ago.
Right.
So. Which also then means that in five or six years, we may be having a very different conversation also here. So having this information and having this, as we're building this, making sure that we have the information in place, we have the updates in place that we need to if we're doing it. It would probably serve us well to have this, at least from a comparative standpoint or a research standpoint to reference down the road to. I think, I think we're going to support whatever we end up doing. I think there's a debate about doing the cameras. Let's just put the information together so we can.
So is the fifty-four thousand dollars, is that the only expense that we would have?
Yes.
Plus the cloud storage. Plus the cloud storage?
That's in that ten thousand, that ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars a year.
It includes.
So after five years, if we start to sign a new contract, then yes.
Well, definitely think whatever you want to go with new. I know wanting to refurbish or dealing with officers' lives.
And when we looked at this, the only reason this company was looked at solely is because of the taser interaction. They are the only company. So when you start comparing them, this is the only company that will automatically turn on the camera with the taser.
Tell us what the advantage is, like in terms of your.
If they walk up, for some reason they haven't tapped that on and they end up pulling a taser using less lethal, which there are almost ninety percent of circumstances is going to be that it would automatically turn it on and then they'd have that recording for the course.
Does it come on when they deploy or just when they uncoaster?
Once they activate the power switch, it comes on.
So at that point, the camera should already be on. I mean.
As they, for some reason, they haven't already tapped it. They see something, they bell out of the car, then they pull their taser and don't have an activated lights or something. There is that possibility. That's the one thing that this company, that's their big selling point. Is as soon as you power up your taser, it automatically turns on, just like the lights.
Sometimes we've driven up on folks that where there's a situation, we don't necessarily have the lights on. You know, it's just like, hey, what's going on? And it escalates very quickly.
I understand.
Yeah. I mean, so I think that's. Me personally, from the court standpoint, is the more information and video I can have, the always better, so.
So I, I think that that would be a strong selling point. I think there's, there's a decent likelihood that we may end up going with, with this current bid as is. That makes a lot of sense. This might be helpful to have that other information to, to even support this decision. I think that having the taser on auto is fantastic. I think working in a, in a training program to make sure that this is the first thing I do as soon as my, as soon as my hand hits the door handle, my other hand hits the test, right? We can do a lot of things to try to maximize the opportunity to capture as much information as possible. But in the interest of capturing the most information possible, it might be prudent for us to gather all the information about these two competing companies so that we can make the best decision.
Be appropriate to have a motion table?
I guess I would just like some guidance. We just want to look at this one other company that people are using here because there are multiple companies out there. I mean, if we can narrow this down, we can get it back probably in two weeks. We're going to open this up to all the camera companies and we're going to need a lot longer.
So I think that we have, we have our, I would be comfortable looking at these two. If this is one that is regionally active and, and we have some good faith that is a viable camera company and we have our history with Axon, I think that we could, we could compare these two and, and feel that we're making an informed decision. I think it could be between these two.
As I recall, we were among the first communities of our size to, to start using body cameras. Honestly, I, this is a relatively. I mean, you can't put a price on a life. And I think that if this is what they want, that this is what we should get them. And I, I don't see any need to to debate it. I mean, honestly, to, this is what they want, this is what they should have. I think you've convinced me.
Something comparable for what it.
Well, but you're not going to get them.
It's not, because it wasn't in the budget. It was.
Oh, okay. It's not in the budget.
Grant is what it was supposed to be for. But they found room for it in the budget, correct?
He found room in the budget.
So there's room in the budget for it. It was not in the budget that we approved because we thought it was going to be in the DOJ grant, correct?
When the budgets were being done, that was the the thought was that they'd be able to take this out of a grant and it ended up being in an L-1.
So in my opinion, it's like, there's no argument that we're going to have a patrol car. We know that our officers need a patrol car. We've always had explorers, but now we may have the opportunity to consider whether a Durango would be worthwhile and folding into the fleet. So instead of just going with the explorers, we always have, let's just look at what the explorer looks like next to the Durango. Let's make sure that we have the best vehicle for our officers and let's go with that vehicle. There's not, there's not the debate about whether they need a vehicle or not. I don't, I don't anticipate there being a debate. That's whether we need cameras or not. It's just what's going to be the best camera, what's going to have the best package, what's going to offer our officers and our, all, all staff, the most information at the most economical price. And it'd be good to have that. So we can say, no, we looked at both of these and this was the clear front runner. Actually, this was a better option, all things considered.
Okay, but back to the question of whether we're going to open this up for bids.
So.
Remind me, can you remind us of our purchasing policy?
We can go through and if there's a few vendors or specialty items, which I would argue this is a specialty item, we can request competitive quotes so we don't have to actually open it up for bids and publicly advertise it and then wait that whole four to six week process. We could select a few vendors that we know and trust, shortlist them and, and compare them and bring them to you for consideration.
What I'm getting is that this is a time sensitive matter. We need to replace these sooner rather than later.
But does two weeks, does that limit their ability to get it to us in January?
I, I haven't asked that question.
I'm just thinking about the safety factor of them automatically turning on, you take that taser out. I just, I think relying on somebody in an emergency situation to remember to turn a body camera on, that's.
But they've been trained to do that.
Well, but training is one thing. Doing it in an emergency situation is a total different ballgame.
It should be habit.
Well, habit is, that's, you know, you can't, can't guarantee it. Of course, I guess you can't guarantee it's going to come on. So.
But it would be again, if they don't use their taser and they have to pull their gun, that camera's not automatically going to come on. So I mean, it's one instance versus.
In this day and age, any safety features that we can give them is just that much better.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the contract with Axon Enterprise at a cost of ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents a year for five years.
Been a motion by Commissioner Hatch and a second by Commissioner Wentz. Is there any further discussion?
I think a five-year contract with, no offense, an interim police chief making that decision shouldn't be. Again, I.
I understand. It's, I'm just, I'm bringing up what I'm getting from them, so.
Yeah. And, and I agree. I think they need the body cameras. I think this is a lot of money for five years for not a lot of maybe research time with just one company. The other company, somebody else uses, may have that same feature for a little less money.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Moving on, planning commission reappointments.
Mayor Commissioners Suzie Tuggle and Steve Connor turned on the planning commission and advised I have a midnight. And they're both applying to re, they're both traveling, so they sent through email and text the real expression of interest, so I recommend a reappointment.
I move to reappoint Suzie Tuggle and Steve Connor to the planning commission.
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Wentz and a second by Commissioner Lambert to reappoint Suzie Tuggle and Steve Connor to the planning commission. Is there any further discussion? To reappoint Suzie Tuggle and Steve Connor to the planning commission. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Managers report.
Mayor Commissioners, just wanted to let you know that we are working on updating the nuisance ordinance. We've done some research with some other communities to see. How they handle nuisances and several of them have expanded. Versions of our ordinance so they cover a few more items that were listed in ours to consider nuisances. And there are several that also run those through municipal courts or. We're trying to update our ordinance to go that direction. So we'll bring that forth with you. As soon as it's ready, Justin will provide an update on the particular one on West Seven, on the progress that we've made for that. You'll notice that there's been some. Improvements made at the police department on the exterior. These are primarily, I'm going to call them maintenance improvements. They were included on the CIP. We've budgeted twenty thousand dollars for those improvements. We had the wooden shake shingles that were falling off and leading nails on the sidewalk. We had some tuck pointing done this summer when the tuck pointers were at the Brown Grand. There was just a couple of cracks that they had to fill in. Recently got the painting done. The next steps will be working on a sign design, exterior signage to really kind of dress up and make you really see that that is the police department. Market Wildside is working, working at that estimate for us. And then we're looking at tinting the windows. We looked at options of replacing the windows because we get a lot of heat coming in through those south and east windows. We also have a lot of glare that goes right into the dispatcher's window. And so when you're sitting in dispatch at certain times of the day, it's difficult to see who's coming through that door. So we looked at tinting as a real option. We are working within the purchasing policy and I would thank you again for, for the ability to increase those thresholds for us because we're able to get the first two components done without exceeding the threshold. So just to let you know kind of what's going on there. Dressing it up into the building or that in the downtown. Regarding housing, the MIH grant, we should hear back from Commerce sometime this month. I don't know if it'll be beginning, middle, end of the month on if we get that grant or not, but it's supposed to happen sometime this month. So we'll let you know as soon as that goes. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Okay, staff reports.
Couple updates. We just last night finished our fall. Sport lineup. In Sock, we have about a hundred and sixty kids over sixteen teens. The nine through twelve is usually our lowest one and it was up about twenty, twenty kids this year. So that was good to see. Youth volleyball, girls volleyball was around sixty kids. We have the nine teams between the two divisions. Black football, a hundred and twenty-five kids, thirteen teens. And both volleyball, football, we have teams from, come from Clifton, White area and Bellville area. It's handy at Pike Valley. So there were some teams in on that. Start of the fall, our same volleyball had seven teams. And then women's volleyball, which ended last night, had five teams. Which is about average though, but. It might uptick another team next year too because there, some of the girls come out of high school and talk about it. So. Before that. Build back up a little bit. And also, if you haven't been by the ball fields. During a while, they're moving, moving around along with the turf project. They've got the base layer of rock. All done and now they're bringing in those smaller crush rock for a little bit. It's a top layer before they put the turf on. So there. That weekend that they started ahead of schedule, this, we're moving around long, so. So no delays with the turf project. So, so. Swing the turf here now.
Um, so. We've had some issues with nuisances in town. It sometimes follows along with issues with permitting as well. Certain things have been taking place. So we've tried to explore. Different avenues that we can take. Because some of these things need to be addressed and, and the folks up front who are addressing them are trying as hard as they can. I. Whether it's been Lindsay or anybody before her, a lot of times they take a lot of that flack because they're out there trying to address it, trying to talk to folks. So we're going to kind of address these in a different fashion. I assume we'll probably be doing this more consistently, but for the one that we've had a real issue with. The approach we're going to take is, so what we can actually do with nuisances as opposed to sending someone out and saying, you gotta clean this up or we're going to rebate this, we can actually run that through municipal boards. After a lot of the discussion. I think that's probably the most proper way to do that. A situation that we have currently is a situation with a nuisance and a permanent, and, and permitting. What they're doing there is they're. Zoning, I'm sorry, not permitting, zoning, zoning. They're not zoned to be doing the work that they're out there doing. So what we're going to do is, is that person has been noticed up to appear actually in court on Monday. And then, so what the process generally is, is evidence isn't provided. And then we ask for a court order for that stuff to be removed. And if it's not removed, then directing the, the city remove it. And then it will be put into storage safely. We'll probably have to, as best we can, inventory the stuff that we have and then place it into storage at which point in time it will be. There would be a daily charge for that storage. I think that's probably the best way to deal with some of these, if not all of them here in the future. It just gives it a little bit more teeth and allows for the, an actual enforcement mechanism. So if they don't do this, it can be removed. They can be brought back to court for violating a court order. So when the attempt to take that approach. I've had a lot of people express frustrations regarding some of this stuff and it's not that our city folks have done anything or we haven't. The steps and some of the tape we have to go through can be very difficult. And then it depends on what kind of stuff they have in the yard. How dangerous it is, is it an attractive nuisance, all sorts of different things. So what we'll do is, is we'll set this kind of on my plate and I'll argue it before the judge. As to what, what needs to take place. It's gone. Wanted to update you guys on that. So we'll, that's the approach that we'll be taking with us. And I think probably the approach that some of these we probably will begin to take. I think that's. Most appropriate.
Thank you, Justin.
You're welcome. Amy.
Thank you, Justin and Amy.
There we go. Thanks.
Chief Staff comments? Jerry, I have a quick question. So can you kind of update us on wastewater treatment plant, kind of where we are and what you're seeing as results and?
We are at a standstill.
Okay. Okay.
Waiting, waiting for electrical. Equipment. Things like that.
And no estimate on time that we'll get those?
Their dates keep getting pushed back.
Okay. Any other staff comments? Okay. Mayor Commissioner comments. We'll start with Chuck.
First, just want to thank city staff for always helping out with neighborhood activities, setting barricades out. How helpful it is to be able to, to make neighborhood safer, neighborhood activities. Makes it really easy when we can just take a phone call and the barricade is there and then we have our event and then the barricades go away. It's really, really nice. So appreciate that and all the hard work the city staff put day in and day out.
Well, Friday was a glorious day as far as I'm concerned. Actually, I went up Thursday night, so the new hospital was beautiful. If you haven't been there, you need to go. Well, I hope you don't need to go, but.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. How often do we have trash pick up here in town?
Except for twice a week, normal, but if we need to pick up in the fall?
Well, the, the. Trash can in front of jitters is always full. I, I don't know why. They can't empty it, but. Because they have a dumpster in back, but. It's a city trash can, so it's soon. And I had. And I think talking. One of the bus drivers talking about the parking on Cedar Street. Between Eleventh and Twelve. On the west side. There, when they, the buses. Go to Republican and come back down on Twelve and turn on Cedar after school. It's. The kids that are parked along there often are standing out talking. And it's hard for them to get the buses around there. They wondered about if there was a way we could make that no parking. Since they have a big parking lot now on the other side of high school, so. And then I, I got a, I did a thing from the Kansas Sanford Foundation and. In today's tidbits that we got. There are some ordinances on vacant property. Downtown properties, ordinances. And they even gave Council Groves ordinance. I thought maybe it was something we could look into because they were for vacant. Commercial, this happened to be vacant commercial buildings and how they enforce people. Keeping them up even if they're vacant, so. Just seemed like something maybe we ought to look at, so. The hospital is beautiful and Bruce Strait's painting or prints are gorgeous.
My only comment, we have our city manager evaluations and they're due the seventh. And sorry for the rush on those. I just want to make sure that we get those all in. So please get those in if you haven't. And that will be in on that. So moving on to our information agenda, third quarter financial report. Oh, okay. But I can discuss it if you want. It is great. We're right on target and our sales tax is up, as you probably saw at the end there. A little bit of it was timing, but overall it's just about four years, so. Everything is on target or above. Any questions on it?
I didn't find it.
Red's bad, right?
That's good.
Right, there you go.
Okay, going on into executive session for confidential business data.
Fifty minutes, we're good. I move that the city commission recesses into executive session to discuss confidential business data, secrets of a business, KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, before with Amy Lang, Justin Farrell. Jason Gordon, Christie Gordon and Nicole Reed in attendance in a reconvene in the city commission chamber. At six thirty-five PM.
There's a motion by Commissioner Lambert and a second by Commissioner Beldon to move into executive session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. And all those opposed? Okay. No action was taken. For motion to adjourn. There's a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn to a study session to discuss. Fire replacement equipment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. We need a break. Are we done?
We're just going to kind of talk, I did hear us kind of talk about fire department equipment and where we're at. Seems like when we go to purchase stuff, it gets pretty expensive. So we're just kind of, kind of giving you an update. So if you start at the top of this, Medic Two, two thousand eighteen, it's got about forty-seven thousand miles on it. We plan to replace that in two thousand and thirty-two. Cost now for a Medic Eight is about two hundred thousand dollars. Medic Three, we need to replace. It's a nineteen ninety-eight. The reason we've had that one so long, if you recall, we had all those six Os and we had the six O turbo problems. So we kept that one way longer and we should have.
What's six O?
Six O is the motor of Ford, the Ford motor. And like every twenty to thirty thousand miles, we were losing turbos and spending about thirty, forty thousand to fix it. So that's due to be replaced. Medic Four is two thousand sixteen. We've already got sixty-one thousand five hundred miles on it. It's our first stop truck. Medic Five is two thousand twenty. And it's got already fourteen thousand miles on it. We use Medic Five quite a bit for our transfers and that stuff. So it's going to start getting those miles up on it. Our rescue trucks, two thousand two. Only has eleven thousand miles on it, but it is extremely overweight for the equipment that we need and to carry and we cannot put all the equipment on it.
Which one's the rescue?
Rescue's the little pickup. So it's going to cost about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we was to replace it. Engine one is a two thousand and ten. And it right now, it'd be about three hundred and eighty thousand to replace it. Engine two is a two thousand and two. Once again, it was purchased the same time as rescue and ladder. And to replace engine two is going to be about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's something we need to look at doing here very shortly. And when we get to the end of this, we've got the equipment on there. Ladder truck, it's on here still as one million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, but we've already purchased that. It came in lower, so that's a good thing. We got a lot of that off of the grants. Truck one is one of the command vehicles. It's a two thousand and two, is purchased the same time as all the other equipments. And it's going to cost, we're estimating about fifty thousand dollars to replace that. That's our three-quarter ton truck that I was driving. I'm not driving it anymore. We lost the head gasket going to a call and it got extremely hot. So it's going to cost about nine thousand to, to repair it. But if we're going to replace it, I've just been driving a patrol car as a command vehicle. And since we're down officers and stuff, it just hasn't worked out for us that way. But we do need to replace that with a three-quarter ton vehicle to pull our big command hazmat trailer to help out the emergency manager of his trailers if we need to pull one to an emergency. Truck two is the red truck that the officers use here as a chase vehicle. It's a two thousand and eleven. It's got a hundred and seventeen thousand miles on it. And it's going to probably be about fifty thousand dollars to replace it. Bunker gear. Right now, we're pretty low on bunker gear. And we actually have some people that don't have bunker gear, to include myself. I've given out the bunker gear because I shouldn't be going inside anyways. But we're giving it out to make the people that are eligible to go inside and fight our bunker gear. But we are getting where we're going to need that. It's a pretty costly endeavor. It's about fifteen hundred dollars for a pair of pants, a thousand dollars for a coat, two hundred and fifty dollars for a helmet. Our monitors are listed on there and here in a couple of years, we're going to need to start replacing those. We were able to get some of those off of the COVID grant. That's right now about forty-six thousand dollars. Our ventilators. We got several of them off of the COVID grants and they're about thirty-five thousand now to replace. Our auto bolts. We'll have to be thinking about replacing our EMS cots and load systems. We have one that's a two thousand and four, so it's pushing its lifetime pretty good. We should have replaced it in two thousand and fourteen. One is a two thousand and twelve. We should be replacing it this year. What we'd like to do is replace those with the cot and the load system. The load system is a device that mounts in the truck, comes out and you put the cot into it, it actually picks it up and it reduces our back injuries and that kind of stuff. As people are getting bigger and it will end up to the seven hundred and fifty pounds. So it makes it a lot easier on who. There were times we had to think about how big the patient was and who we sent on transfers. Or how many people we sent just to load them in and out of the trucks. Hose is something we need to start thinking about, but the big one is our extrication equipment. It's from nineteen eighty-three. Should have been replaced probably in nineteen ninety-eight. It's about twenty-two thousand dollars worth. Should have been replaced probably in nineteen ninety-eight, it's about twenty-two thousand dollars worth of equipment, that's our jaws, our cutters and spreaders and power unit. Our airbags, we actually have one set that is out of service from nineteen eighty-three, we still have one set from two thousand and four. And they're about twenty-three hundred dollars. SCBA bottles were bought in two thousand and eleven. And the spares and it's all bought in one big package, about two thousand twenty-six, we need to be replacing those right now. The air packs and bottles are about forty-five hundred dollars a piece, two thousand just for the spare bottles. Our thermal imagers, uh, should have been replaced a couple of years ago, and now they're about seven thousand dollars each. Flip it over to the back, if there's any questions on that, that's where we really get into what we're needing to really think about, so.
The cost is per?
Per, per unit.
And, um, the reason they haven't been, some of those that way updated, hasn't been updated just because it's not enough.
It's been not on the budget and we've been having to replace medic units and the equipment on the medic side. So a lot of the fireside has been pushed back. Because of the amount of, when I, I say this bad, when I was here and I worked and I actually ran calls, we only had to have two medic units. And very seldom were both of them out, and now it's quite frequent, we have two out at a time, if not three. So on the back page, that's the stuff we really need to be thinking about to replace the medic three, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. If we was to order that today, it's almost a two-year lead time. So that's why we wanted to talk about this, just like the ladder truck. To kid on the list, seems like every month it's going out another two months. So we need to really start thinking about this and what we're going to do. The rescue truck, it should have been replaced, but I got a, a brilliant idea. With our ladder truck, it's going to become our first out truck. And all this is because of ISO ratings, we can take engine two, make that our rescue truck. Cause it doesn't have a lot of miles, that will still then count as another engine for us. We can take the current rescue truck and make that into a grass rig, we're going out and helping the real fire a ton. And we have a lot of grass area ourselves to cover, if we think about out there at the ethanol plant was supposed to go, that's our area to cover. So we can keep that as a grass rig and then we end up only replacing engine two. And we're going to repurpose the other ones, then that gives us then three engines plus an area for our ISO rate.
Does it make it better?
Yes, when that and when the old hospital comes down.
Yeah.
I'm ninety-five percent sure when we do the reevaluation, we get the trucks and we get it all in place that we have dropped down to.
And that would lower everybody's insurance to town, yeah, awesome.
So that's kind of been the way we've been trying to go with the training, the inspections. And this, I could probably give us to one, if you guys let me hire about six more people per ship. If we've caught up with that money, we could probably do it, but trying to work within the scope that Amy's making me work within.
Eric, how much of this did you, sorry, I just forgot, how much of this is in our, did you ask for in our budget this year, none of it? Or is this an ask for next year?
We, we've got, if I remember right, we've got the engine and a medic unit and one of the command vehicles in there.
Okay.
But we honestly thought when I did the budget that we was going to be about three, four hundred days out. And now with the lead times, we're talking a couple of years. So we need to kind of think about getting them ordered plus some, so we can get on track.
So your budget didn't include any of the guy, the your employees' equipment?
Yeah, we've got some in there to replace, but the problem we keep having is with the fuel going up, we keep having to pull money to take care of the medic side. Drugs, um, like I've said before, normal saline, it's just any kind of medication, it's just going through the roof. And, you know, we're on track right now to do over a thousand calls, and we've never ran a thousand calls here before. So the guys are running around getting and doing what they can. And we're still getting asked by all means, and we try to take everything we can, the transfers and that stuff, but. We're just constantly getting hits where Rob and Peter are paying.
I guess maybe too, I mean. That's only going to increase now, so, like, what's our long-term strategy?
You want to know what I think needs to happen? What I think. But I have, I have this discussion, I say it all the time. We, we truly need to hire another person per ship, can go four people per ship. And then we could take one dedicated transfer truck and one nine-one-one truck. And if the statistics that is the national average on a new hospital opens a thirty percent increase. You can say that rolls down to us a thirty percent transfer increase. We're going to be getting asked a lot, and it's not just us all around, the state, people can't get transfers out. And EMS staff doesn't have much to do.
With the up in the transfers and stuff, would that justify the possible ask of hiring one more person per ship? I mean, does it balance?
That's the, that's the numbers that we're working through now, is the cost of people compared to what we bill, compared to what we actually receive, and to see what that gap is.
Is there any grants to cover? I'm just thinking that the guys is, I'm sorry.
Bunker gear?
Yeah.
The bunker gear, we will be eligible come December, the next, uh, grant. Years ago, we got a grant and we replaced all the bunker gear and at one shot, and that's the problem. We had Jeff Strickland, you can see a lot of stuff was done in two thousand two, um, got a lot of stuff done. And got some grants and did everything at one shot, but now we've had everything. It replacement at the same time, and we've had all the budget traps in between, so.
One of the things I think we're doing a better job of in all departments is really working that equipment replacement list and really looking ahead. To see what we do need, so this is, I think Eric's done a nice job, I know Eric did a really nice job with BD, trying to get those vehicles back on a cycle. So that we don't end up in this situation, and that's, that's really important to view.
So you don't buy them all the same year, didn't they?
Some of the, um, the vehicles. Can you trade them in or auction them and get some?
My truck one, the, the plan is probably auction it on Purple Wave, but probably, they'll probably go for about seven thousand dollars. And the condition it's in, just looking at because of the motor it is, somebody's going to spend that extra eight thousand dollars because it is a good strong motor. Um, the medic units, when we've auctioned them off, we average about fifteen hundred to two thousand, I believe, for those, so. In the grand scheme of things, the biggest thing we might is our ladder truck, when we go to sell it in a couple of years. Um, probably at thirty-five to forty thousand dollar range.
But, but if the medic, the medic trucks were so worthwhile, we wouldn't be selling them. Right, so I mean, that's part of why they don't command much of a price on auction, or maybe I'm saying the wrong truck, but that's why we get so little porn, right? Is that if they were still rolling and serving us well, we would.
We wouldn't be getting rid of them. People that end up buying them are usually like your plumbers or your contractors or that kind of stuff, to use them for something like that. On the list, we need to be thinking about the airbags, the extrication equipment, replacing at least one cotton load system. And the easiest way to do that is when we buy a medic unit, just to put that in with it, it'll be cheaper that way and do it all in one shot. Engine two is on there, but like I said, my suggestion is we don't actually, we take that out as our primary engine, it becomes a reserve or backup engine for us. Which will help us on our ISO. And then truck one and then ladder truck has been purchased or contracted and started to be built, so. The biggest thing I, that I probably need, and I, we're going to get some specs out and get it going, is to get a medic unit, at least one. If not two, and and a second engine, and start getting them. Back to you guys for some bit approvals, if that's okay with you guys, and start working that process, because if we're talking two years out.
You need to get wrong.
But then we need to talk about this, and we kind of think as we do the budget, that that, those are going to be issues that we have in those years.
What kind of guidance are you looking from us, or just letting us know what's coming?
Just kind of letting you know, it seems like there's a sticker shock when we start seeing our vehicles and equipment supplies.
Also sticker shock when I see the price of having to replace my house.
And then the biggest thing is, um, you know, we kind of talked about one medic unit, but because of the time delays and where we're going to be, I think with transfers. I'm going to suggest that we do two of them and try to get a better cost. And then get that engine replaced.
I don't like it, but I don't like the alternative.
I appreciate you looking at hand, and the fact that you've got, you know, it's two years and two years of stuff. You're going to have another hundred thousand with the transfers you do.
When we started looking at the ladder truck, it was like four hundred and fifty to five hundred days. And, you know, now it's at where it's at, so I mean, it's, they're having a little problems too, so we're just trying to think ahead and get some things going.
Do you have enough equipment for your staff? Like, I keep going back to this equipment thing.
We, we do right now, and and we're sitting pretty good, I think, on the budget, we're probably be buying some.
Okay.
And getting them replaced, um. There's a couple of grants that may be coming open, that state fire marshal's trying to get back. Um, so we're hoping that that comes back into play, so. It was taken away a while back and talked to him the other day when he was here, he thinks he's going to get that back in his budget, so we're trying to find some other avenues and grants to get stuff. But everyone right now that shows up that goes into fire is protected and covered.
Which good.
Uh, if people see me, uh, my gear looks like third gear, but it's actually wildland gear, you can't wear it in the house fire, but the outside looks the same. But that wildland gear costs three hundred dollars for the pants and coat, so I got that. So if there's pictures and that kind of stuff taken, it looks like we're all in gear and we're doing right, but it's actually not structural gear.
Is there ever a time that you should actually have the?
That's an open-ended question.
Okay.
And sometimes when we go to calls, the way we're supposed to operate, is when you send two people in, you have two people on the backup, two people for a rescue team. And one at least on the truck plus an incident commander, and sometimes when we have six or seven people show up, total. So there's times, yes, that's why that remote control on the ladder truck and stuff is so important because of the way, sometimes we are for staffing. And when we do a great job with Whirl and stuff, if we start paging out, people do start coming in and helping, but it is a time delay.
So it sounds to me like you really need to be looking at the budget for two more employees. Finding them is another, three more.
And actually finding them for us isn't as hard, um, we're finishing up. And I think it went through appropriations, um, we've been doing a lot of classes. And right now, between the two classes, we've got, we've got ten in an A U T class. And we've got fourteen people in an E M T class, but that's spread out between Minneapolis. Mountainville, us, Jewel County, San Fran, Boy, but we do have some people interested in coming here and working. And the biggest reason they want to come here and work for fire EMS is it is a combined service. And the way we get to operate, we're so family oriented. If there's, nothing against Slana, there's great guys down there, but if they want to go, they can't just go watch their kids how we walk through at the school. And we take a truck and we go do that, and we go to a softball game, so that's one of those things. And when I was here, we had a chief for a while that didn't allow that stuff, and it caused extreme hardships on family, and that's one of the big things since I've been here. Now let's take a truck, go home, I mean, I was here as a big thing, you went home almost every night and took his kids in bed every night. And that's one of the nice things that being here at Concordium, we use that as a big, and students are being the right time, they're starting to see that, because I'm hearing about it in class.
Thanks for doing that, that's much appreciated.
When you do the E M T, then if they come in to us, you train them for the fire?
Yes.
Part, oh, correct.
So right now, what we do is we do all the EMS training and all the fire training in-house. And as of. The, the books are supposed to be done, some of them won't be done because they're in EMS and paramedic classes, but. December, first part of December, everyone will be pretty much firefighter one and two certified. Like I said, we've been running classes right in that, and. Or working with the college, those are classes that are being held down here for E M T classes, so we're trying every avenue we can. The same token, we got people that are going elsewhere, um, because they can get the jobs and get the openings right now, so.
I appreciate all of your work on this and the police department.
It's gonna be over. It, it makes it pretty, it's, it's time consuming, and it is, but both departments have got great people to work with, so it makes it easy for me, it makes my job easier, and I've got that.
That's good, we appreciate all of it.
Yeah.